Good evening, Stonecrest. Welcome to this work session of the City Council of July 14, 2025. The time now is 6:08. Madam City Clerk, will you be so kind as to give us a roll call, please?
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Jasmine Cobble.
Present.
Councilmember Tara Graves.
Here.
Councilmember Terry By.
Present.
Councilmember Alicia Washington.
Here.
Tim George Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Tammy Grimes.
Here.
We have a quarrel.
Thank you very much. Counsel, you have an agenda before you. Any need for an adjustment? Here in none, then we will proceed as outlined. The first item on the agenda is for discussion. Justice in Action Municipal Court of Stonecrest Judicial Update. Chief Judge Curtis Devia Miller.
Good afternoon, everybody, or good evening. And as always, thank you for allowing me to give you all a report and update on where we are with the court. I think I'm gonna start off by at least making sure all of you all know that we have lost Ms. Minor to Maybethan. And she has been very instrumental in the development of the court. And in my opinion, without her, we would not be where we are today. I had the clerk, Ms. Victoria, pass you out some statistics. But if you want further statistics, we can give those to you. What you have in your hand should be a case count for the six-month period in prior years and this year. And if you look at it, you can see the increase in cases that the court has handled this year as opposed to other years. And the other document is the revenue that the court has brought in in terms of fines. And I just, for the record, I don't want anybody, especially council people, to think that the court is a source of revenue. It is not. But you all have expressed the value of fines, fees in terms of enforcement. And so I wanted you all to see what we're doing by way of fines and fees so that you can at least analyze it in terms of enforcement of your ordinances. We've had to increase our calendars as a result of the increase in cases. Now, part of that increase is due to council's decision to increase the number of code enforcement officers. But I think another part of that court case increase is because code enforcement has become very adept in finding businesses in Stonecrest that had not obtained business licenses to operate in the municipality and occupational tax. And we have seen a tremendous amount of those cases. And I want to commend code enforcement to you all today because obvious by our calendar, they are doing an excellent job. Several businesses that have come to court have said they didn't know they had to get a license. But I think they know now, which is a good thing. They're operating in the city. And if you all may recall, I think we had said in the past that so many of the property owners in Stonecrest were corporate entities and absentee landlords. So apparently, there has been better enforcement of the municipal code in terms of getting businesses that are not persons to comply. And one of those main compliance issues is a business license. Our judges have become more cognizant of issues that involve those non-person entities. For instance, we had a case on my calendar last week where code enforcement has cited the apartment complex trade name. And I think City Attorney will let you all know. It's been done in the past here, but we have been very instrumental in making sure that whoever we have before us is the legal entity who is charged with the maintenance of the property and complying with the law. So that means code enforcement sometime has to do, and the solicitor has to do a little bit more work to make sure that the proper entity has been charged. As you all know, your quality of life code is set up as a quasi, it may not even be quasi, criminal code. You can't lock up a corporate entity. And that, and you all have worked on trying to put a little bit more teeth in it because we do have so many corporate partnerships, those type of property owners here in Stonecrest. And all our judges have become more cognizant in making sure that we have the proper entity. So if they don't comply with the code, then that gives us some ability to enforce the compliance. We can hold them in contempt and other things, but you have to have the proper entity. And then we have a lot of absentee land property owners, I think, in this city. People who own property but don't live on that property and have moved out of the city. And on my calendar last week again, we had a property owner who now, who lives in Nigeria. And she was in court on video court from Nigeria. We're seeing more and more of that type of thing as code enforcement steps up their enforcement of the codes. The transition period that we're going through now with the loss of our clerk and court administrator, I just wanna make imperative that where we go from here is going to really depend on how well we manage that process. We can lose an enormous amount of ground that has been achieved in the last three years. When the former clerk of court, court administrator, and I started working the court, we saw a lot of gaps, a lot of things that had not been done that should have been done. And we've made a tremendous headway in having the court operate in an efficient manner. And we don't wanna lose any ground. We were left out of the process that led to the IGA with Lethonia. We were told that there are some negotiations or will be negotiations with DeKalb County in terms of looking at the IGA with them, some renegotiation. We have not been informed if that has occurred or how that process is going to work. And we've made several requests in the past to engage a marshal or a law enforcement person to help us with bench warrants, failure to appear, if we wanted to use contempt citations. Some criminal offenses, people have to be fingerprinted. And we are not set up because we don't have a police department. So we were hoping that there was a possibility in one of the IGAs with either Lethonia, DeKalb County, that we could show up some of those gaps in the court processes. Now, although the formal process to replace Ms. Minor has not started, at least to my knowledge, it has not started. There has been interest in her position. And I truly think there are some experienced candidates who would love to come here in Stonecrest and take on those roles. If you all decide to keep it the way it was with her doing two roles, or if you decide to separate the roles, I think you will find that there are candidates. And in fact, there have been some interested candidates who have already made inquiry as to the opening, when the job will be posted, et cetera, et cetera. I don't think I can emphasize enough how important it is that I be involved in that process to make sure that the candidate that is chosen is a candidate that understands where we are in the code. We are a unique court, and I think you all know we're unique because the primary responsibility of our court are quality of life issues. DeKalb recently sent a criminal offense over to the court. At one time, there were more criminal offenses. But now, and I think I've told you all at a report before, we don't see as many criminal offenses that come from DeKalb Police Department. But we have had meetings with Major Barron, who's the precinct commander in East, and Lieutenant Tyner, who's assigned this area in terms of police officers being able to return their citations to us. It makes it easier for them if they can come to court here, if the trials are here. But they have not been returning those cases to us. And that's fine if they find it more appropriate or better to return the cases to state court. But I think that you all would have a better feel for what's going on in terms of criminal enforcement of cases if those cases were handled here in Stonecrest. Or a lot more of those cases were handled here in Stonecrest. So we could report, when I make my contractual required by annual reports to you all, I can give you more information about that. So if you have to field questions from your constituents about criminal cases. I also just wanna kind of conclude my report. It's not going to be long because I think the main thing for us now is making sure we maintain the consistency that we've already established in the court. But I also wanna make sure that you all understand that the investment you all have made in the court has paid off. And I hope that you are not inundated as much as you have been in the past with your constituents not being satisfied with enforcement. And that's pretty much my report. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Counsel?
Mayor Protim. I'm gonna address a couple of things that the judge said. And I'm gonna be honest with you, Judge Miller. I'm very disappointed that I feel like the tone in which your report to us was more about the lack of what we're doing as an administrative arm and executive arm versus having those conversations directly with us. I am aware that you've had some conversations with the city manager, but I'm slightly disappointed that you would choose to use the dais as an opportunity to almost formulate a thought for the city council as if we were not including the court in decisions. So I just wanna walk through a couple of those points because I do want the council to at least have something to balance that from. We have been working with the county, as you know, and Mallory was well aware. Exactly, Mallory spent many of hours working with us to craft both the IGAs that are with the counties today. We continue to work with the county leadership to get those moved. We meet with them almost monthly to talk about many things. Top of the agenda is always our IGAs. That information is relayed to Mallory, and which we assume is relaying to you. But those are with the county and have been. We have informed you all of that many a time. And actually, we are hoping that they will, that the county has that on their agenda either this month or next month, I think August was the month that we talked in our last meeting, to have that moved through. Even our legal counsel has spent time and time and time working with the court to write those IGAs. So you all have been involved in that process from beginning to end and have been given regular updates on where those statuses are. So I'm disappointed to hear you say that you have not been involved because you're all, the court, which belongs to the city, has been a part of that conversation since the beginning and inception and has been given updates up until just recently. So as soon as those IGAs are executed, which have everything that the court asked for, including the marshal, everything the court asked for between GCIC and any other adjustments to our law enforcement IGA and our court martial, all have been with the input from the court. So under no circumstances are we excluding the court from those IGAs. You asked us for it. I've taken the lead on that above almost any other priority in my administration. And I have given updates to that time and time and time again. So I hope that the council does not think that we have been purposely giving the court or keeping the court in the dark on those IGAs. They are not in our hands. They are with the county. But as of just our recent meeting, we hope that it was their intent to have it on their August commission meeting. And so we're hopeful that they will be able to continue with that. You mentioned the IGA with LPD, with Lethonia Police. And I think we all know, including the council who voted on that, that IGA was for security services, for city events and city buildings. It was not for the court. And I understand that you may have wanted to extend that to the court. But that wasn't what the, that wasn't the intent of the IGA. And I've heard you say that before, and I know that we've, we've had that talk. And we've, we've had this conversation with you about the intent for that IGA. It wasn't with Lethonia. It was not the intent to have include any court services. It was for security for facilities and events only. So the way you make that context as if you asked and we said no. The intent for that was to replace the security services contract we had with prior private entities and use law enforcement services as a way to protect our buildings and our events. Totally disconnected from court because we were already simultaneously working on the IGAs with the county that you all asked for. So I hope that also gives the council some context. You also mentioned more than one time about Mallory's impact to the court, in which we all agree Mallory has done well for our court. I don't think anyone would say anything otherwise. But many cities have much competition across our metro area. And Mallory had a great opportunity to move somewhere else. It was not with, with, I think the tone that you delivered that was if we lost her and there was absolutely nothing that we could do. Mallory had a great opportunity to go somewhere else, make more money, and build their court from scratch, just like she contributed to ours. And so we are grateful for that she has that opportunity. And we actually really value what she did to develop our court here. But that does not mean, and I just wanna make sure that context is clear, that she, that we lost her as if we had done something detrimental. She had a great opportunity in front of her, and she did what was best a decision for her and her future, which we wished her well and continue to work and talk with her as we transition both. You've met, you've talked to our city manager, and there has been conversation about the replacement for that position. The council agreed to fund the other position, so now we'll have three positions with the council. We are moving in that direction. When, when we started the court before your contract appointment, we already had personnel here. Personnel is on the side of the administration, it's not on the court side. And so we will continue to use our administrative remedies for hiring personnel as we always have. And when we get to the point where we need judge for you to fill in, we absolutely will. So the context that you're giving us as if we have excluded you from these conversations is absolutely not true. We are gearing up to be able to replace Mallory, who was unreplaceable, irreplaceable, by the way, but to be able to put two people in those positions to keep our court running. The city manager has had meetings with Victoria as well. We are moving the process along, but it is not with the court in the dark. And I just wanted to make sure that before the council leaves the dais, that they hear both sides of that because we are not operating in the dark. We are not operating with you in the dark or in silos. We are one city. Municipal court is a part of this city, and so we treat municipal court like any other department. And I think that we have a great respect for what you do, how you adjudicate, and how our court is run. But it is, it is sad to hear, it has had to hear, it is sad to hear a context that describes the other side of this city as if we're trying to keep you in the dark, and we are not. So I just wanted to make sure that the council has some, at least some context to balance both sides of that. I do have some questions about the report.
Well, can I respond to that? Because I think you took the opportunity to kind of dress me down as well. I'm sorry that you took, yeah, you did, but I'm sorry you took it that way. But I know of several incidences where the court was not involved and I was not involved. And I sent a letter to city manager, to you, addressed it to you and to Mr. Turner. I didn't get a response from either one of you all, and I had called her. This is some two, almost three weeks after we knew that we needed to have a replacement. The acting replacement was chosen without me or Ms. Minor having any input in that. And that person, after reviewing court, decided they did not want to have the position, acting or otherwise.
No, Judge, that's not true. An acting, no one has been appointed acting. So that's not true. No one has been appointed, and the city manager did respond to you. So Judge, I don't wanna go back and forth with you.
That's, that's mayor, I know you and I can.
I just wanna make sure that we're on the same thing about not keeping the court in the dark.
We don't wanna get into a debate about it. I mean, you've put your point on the table, he's given his reply, and we'll come back to you. So if you could finish, sir.
I'm finished. I'll address any questions. And if, you know, if somebody else wants to tell me their viewpoint on what's going on. But I'm expressing myself and my viewpoint based on the facts that I have before me. So if anybody else has been addressing the issues that I have brought before you and didn't bring them to my attention, then it's not an attempt to dress down council. And I don't think you all, anybody can say that I've ever come here to dress you all down. So, you know, it seemed like there was a preparation to dress me down today.
Absolutely not. That was a response on the fly from your comments here. Absolutely not.
I'll, I'll address any questions.
Any other questions for the judge?
Actually.
Councilman By.
Mayor Protim, I apologize. City Manager Scruggs, did we not discuss during our meeting regarding the city marshals, regarding the city marshals and the feasibility of those within the city of Stonecrest?
Stone is not working.
Councilman By, will you repeat your question? I just wanna make sure I understand your question.
Yes, if you could kind of give a heads up on, well, actually, I should, that's not really an appropriate conversation for here. Judge Miller, if you can, if I can ask, what are some of the? What, I'm, I'm having a bit of trouble reading, going through your receipt data here. Could you kind of take us through, because I'm seeing, I'm seeing the numbers here. And I'm seeing on this page for some of the non-traffic citation, non-traffic citations that you have here. Can you kind of take counsel through this document and kind of give us an explanation? I'm talking about the Municipal Court of Stonecrest daily receipt totals.
And, okay, what in particular are you asking me, Councilman By? This, this report is dated. And these are the receipts that are done daily, but they're not broken down into what offenses the receipt so far?
Yes, I was asking what, because I'm seeing some of these are 3,000 ranging in, ranging in numbers. But what are, what are some of the payments meaning? Because I can match them up between each of the, between each of the docs, but I'm having trouble understanding what, what particularly are the payments for?
Now, see, I can't tell you if on January the 8th, what $295 in payments received by the court were for. But if you wanted that information, I'm sure that the records would reflect what those payments were for. Most of the fine payments, we try to get on the day of court. But some people are not paying fines on that day. It's rare, but they may have to the end of the week to make a fine payment, to Friday, 5 o'clock. Some may make payments to probation. Those who have difficulty or the inability to pay could make the payment to probation. And then probation would have to remit the funds to the court at some point. So I can probably safely say the larger amounts, like the February 11th amount, the March 11th, the March 12th, down to April. down to April 8th, April 24th, the 4/28 probably, and the 5/13 payments are probably would correspond to court dates when people are actually in court and making the payments.
Yes, so my, so kind of my confusion is we just have the numbers. We just have these kind of amounts. We don't have what the context of these are. So I'm, I understand the court's generating revenue.
Right.
What's, but what are the, what, how can we see kind of the, what's, what are being fined and things like that?
Let me make sure I understand what you're asking. Do you want to, go ahead.
I'm sorry, the city manager has her hand up, but you were saying something, sir. I'm so sorry to interrupt.
No, that's all right.
If I may, I think I may be able to help Judge Miller, if I may.
You may help me.
Okay, if you look on the second page, it details them out by cash bond, whether it's a fine or a probation payment.
The, the.
The second page. And then if you need it broken out so that it corresponds with the, please, I don't know if that is a report that is automatically generated by the system.
Ah, okay, that's, that's, that's a technical error on my part. I apologize, Mr. Miller, Judge Miller, excuse me.
No.
So, and so based on what your, what your court is seeing this year, I know that you mentioned that code enforcement, the addition of new code enforcement officers have kind of increased the amount of, amount of cases you guys are seeing this year. What are we seeing in terms of the, trying to think of the word, the effectiveness of what of kind of the, of the kind of cases go out? I know that we have here, before we had NOLOs, kind of, kind of Centaurus, which I'm, I'm mispronouncing those words. But in terms of like how we're, what our, what our forfeitures are, how more people are being affected in our compliance, that's the word. How's this, how have you been seeing the compliance going lately?
Well, like I said before, the compliance that has really increased has been corporate compliance or non-person entity compliance. And that, that's usually what generates the larger fines because in most instances, they have multiple offenses. They may have, if they own an apartment complex, they may have multiple offenses. They may have siding issues, roofing issues, parking issues. So when they come to court, code enforcement often is citing them with multiple offenses. So when they are fined, then that generates a larger payment for fines. Most homeowners, single-family homeowners usually have one, sometimes two. And and every now and then we see a homeowner that may have multiples.
Okay, if, if I can ask, and the city manager, did you have something you wanted to add?
Just along those same veins, in terms of Judge Miller mentioning how code enforcement is citing more businesses. As you all recall, part of the increase in staff was to, for us to be able to better address the business community and having our code enforcement officers work very closely with our revenue department to identify businesses that are located in the city that, that either have an expired business license or have not had one at all. So that would also play some part in that. Also, some of the recent legislation that the council has passed. Also, at some point, you will start, may start seeing an increase in those as well because those are your corporate entities. In addition to that, some of the state legislation that helps the court and our legal team identify the appropriate business owners. Those are also things that you will likely see that also play a part in that.
Oh, don't worry. I am so, I'm going to be so happy when you report about those public notices. It's an abatement. So we kick those off. I'm, I'm very impatiently waiting on the results on those. If I can ask two more questions, Judge Miller, can you talk to me about our amnesty day this year? Can you tell me a little bit about how that process went?
Well.
What was the, what was the result of that and kind of tell me about the, the process of how that went?
Well, that was primarily handled by the clerk of court or administrator. But we notify people who have outstanding fines, outstanding cases. A lot of those people are, we have some people that come to court and then leave with, without completing the process, paying their fines. We have some people who don't show up, who end up on that list. And, and people who have been adjudicated and have a fine and didn't complete the fine or complete the probation. So the amnesty day is an opportunity to bring those people in to have their cases adjudicated or taken off the rolls and not adjudicated. We don't hold court that they primarily people coming in and working out a payment. And some adjustments are sometimes made in terms of what they may owe or a case that they have. They may have multiples. They may get some dismissed or reduced fine in order for us to clear the docket. I can't remember the exact number of cases that Ms. Manor had told me, but we had a lot of cases sitting that, they were just sitting there. Nothing was happening to them. So in, in effort to clear those cases up, that's what the amnesty day is, to clear the docket of dormant cases primarily. And I think it's been very effective the couple of times we've done it.
Can you tell me about, in terms of the effectiveness, can you tell me about the process in terms of how was the procedure of it on that day? You did, what was the communication like with other entities in the city, people to work with, things like that?
And I can answer that for you. I don't know was, Judge Scott, did you handle amnesty day? You all know Judge Scott. She's here.
Good evening, counsel. How are y'all doing? Yes, I did handle amnesty day, and it's just like a regular court day. We have our regular docket and we have cases that have, may have been on the docket for several, unfortunately, maybe some years. And so what we try to do is try to clear that docket. We give the, the court administrative staff sends those notices out. People are notified of the amnesty day. They can come in. People who come in, you know, are able to work out their cases and get some type of relief if they so needed. They often try to speak with the solicitor prior to. We have a public defender now that we, that people can use if they qualify for the public defender. So they're able to use those as well and try to get some negotiation. But it is just as Judge Miller had just said, it's just a way to try and clear the docket of cases that have been lingering for a while. And so some of those cases where maybe there was a need to dismiss them. The solicitor will give me a motion to dismiss some of those cases. I'll ask the reason why, and if I see that is a justifiable reason, then some of those cases will be dismissed. And primarily though, those people who come to court can, you know, speak with the solicitor to get some type of negotiated deal on their, on their cases. So that's how it works. And I'm happy if y'all, you know, want to come next year to amnesty day just to see it in action.
And out of curiosity, how was the communication with code in regards to inviting them to amnesty day, making sure that they were present for the cases, things like that?
Code enforcement is generally always present on, at least on my in-person calendar. They're, they're present and I even actually invite them to come up and speak on some of the cases. So they're able to give us an update in terms of, of course, they have to be sworn in. But under sworn testimony, they're able to give us updates on some of those cases as well.
Okay, then. And my final question, which is kind of an overall legislatively, we always have a question of what are we missing in the code? What are some resources that our courts need? What are some things that you're seeing based in your, based in your job that are some gaps that may be happening? I know that we talked a little bit about some of the resources and staffing that you might be looking for. But what are some resources that you're seeing that legislatively we can do to kind of make it take care of some of those gaps?
We went through a list of offenses that the city of Stonecrest has on the books. And of course, I don't know what the development of those offenses were, but that were probably, if I remember, we did this last year and we went through all of the offenses and went through the ones that were duplicate, went through the ones that were also state offenses that should not have been in the municipal code. I'm almost certain that what we were looking at was a copy and paste type thing from somewhere. So we reduced the number of available code sections that should be in the ordinance. Now, the clerk of court Ms. Manor should have given that list to the city manager so, so we could take some action on them. To my knowledge today, no action has been taken on that list. And I don't know if, you know, you want to chime in and help me on that one.
Out of.
As well.
Actually, City Manager Scruggs, before you comment, Judge Miller, did you follow up to make sure that she gave that to us?
That she gave it to, no, I did not.
Yes, sir.
No, I did not.
Okay. All right, then. Mayor Protim, I withdraw.
Thank you.
City Manager Scruggs, you had a comment?
I just was saying to Judge Miller, I'm not aware, but if he would send that to me, I'd be more than happy to take a look at it. Sorry, don't call.
Any other questions for the judge?
I have some questions.
Before you go, before you go, let's see if anyone else, counsel, before we come back to you. Anyone else? Councilwoman Grimes?
Just have one, one question that's eating at me. Judge Scott, what do we do in between the time that the adjudication takes place and amnesty day takes place? What do we do between, because you said they may have been on the docket for years?
Well, these are, I mean, we're still, they're still, we're still having those cases on the docket. And so my dockets on first, the second Thursday of the month, I still see those cases on my docket. And I don't necessarily see the same cases that Judge Miller or Judge Sheridan will see. But it's a culmination of cases. So it's not just my cases that, you know, have been continuously on the docket. But we do send out notices. Sometimes the addresses are not correct. The solicitor helps with trying to make sure that we have proper addresses. And specifically with businesses, sometimes the ownership has changed. And so that's some of the reason why some of those cases stay on the docket longer than we would want them to. And that's why we see them on amnesty day and that's why we try to clear the books from those cases. But what we are doing, or what we were doing, the court administrative staff was helping us do and the solicitor was helping us do, was making sure that we have accurate addresses and accurate notices for either businesses or people or sometimes some of the properties are rented by other, other, you know, entities. And so we just have to make sure that those addresses are accurate. Code enforcement is going out, checking. The solicitor is working to help us get those addresses and the court administrative staff is sending out those notices. So we're all working together to make sure, I shouldn't say years, because we don't have a year, years backlog. But I have seen some cases that maybe 2023, 2024. And so that's why we have the amnesty day to try to get those cases off of the book. But to answer your question, what we, what we're doing to make sure we don't have that problem, we're all working together to make sure we have accurate addresses and accurate notices, notices are going out to those people.
Okay, I guess in the back of my head, I'm just wondering where's, what would be the pinch or the bite to make them come on in? And I'm gonna leave it there. You don't have to answer. But that's, just know that's a burning question for me. What would make them come in faster? Where amnesty day would truly be something for people who may need. But then I'm sure everybody you see is not somebody who needs their fine reduced or need to talk to the solicitor. They just need to do what they need to do. And had something else been in place, they may have been a little more hurried to do it. That's all. You don't have to answer. I promise you don't have to answer.
I was, I was just gonna say that amnesty day has, you know, we've been doing it, I think, maybe two years now. So I think the more we do it and the more the citizens of Stonecrest understand what their, the benefit of amnesty day is, then as long as we keep doing it, I think that people will come in and I think they'll, you know, they'll catch that bite, you know? So that's, you know, the draw for it. So something that you definitely want to keep going because, you know, as the saying goes, build it and they'll come. So.
And Councilwoman Grimes, a corporate entity, a non-person entity, the corporations have to register with the Secretary of State's office. And they have a registered agent for service process. Code enforcement not utilizing that as well as.
The mic says, so we can get it recorded. Yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry. Code enforcement was not using that as well as they should have. Like I had mentioned before, we could have a case where if it's an apartment complex, they may have the trade name of the complex, but that's not the owner of the complex. And our code allows code enforcement to tack a citation on the door. So you have some property owners who don't live in the property. They may not have been there. Code enforcement can cite an owner or possessor of property. So in answer to your question, some of those types of things can be looked at to see if there's a better way to approach it. But if code enforcement leaves a notice on a piece of, on the door of a piece of property and the owner of the property is in Nigeria, for instance, and never sees the notice, they have a tenant who takes the notice down and don't tell them. Then sometimes people come to court and say, I didn't even know I had a citation. We, we run into that periodically. So the corporate entities, once they get noticed properly, they get lawyers. And we have the lawyers sign the plea sheets or we'll ask the person who comes to court on behalf of a non-person entity, how are they affiliated? If they are not an attorney, if they're not an attorney, then we allow the attorney to handle. The law allows that because they, they put on the record, they represent this entity. But sometimes the property manager comes in on behalf of the corporate entity. They have hired a property manager. The other day, we had a medical practice that the accountant for the medical practice came to court. So we have to go through that in, in trying to get the cases adjudicated. You know, we try to make sure we have the proper entity in court. Now, if they just want to pay the fine, and I know you've expressed concern about this in the past. They, some of them, every now and then they just say, we just want to pay the fine. We just want to pay the fine and get out of here. We've been trying not to allow that to happen. And I think amnesty, probably the corporate, my understanding, and you can help me if I'm wrong, the corporate folk who come in for amnesty, pretty much the solicitor's office is not trying to be very lenient with them. They're trying to help them get the case adjudicated, but they're not trying to reduce fines and all of that. And usually it's an attorney involved who's already notified their client the consequences of not complying with the city's code.
I guess my goal, my desire would be that anybody who has to come to your court will go ahead and pay their fine for they leave or whatever the solicitor has worked out that that happens and it doesn't even go into an amnesty. I would love to see amnesty day with two people because everybody else has done what they needed to.
No amnesty day at all, right?
None at all. That's it. Thank you. I'm through.
Councilwoman Washington?
Um, yes, Judge Miller, I was going to ask, is there a set fine for each violation or is it handled case by case?
There is a maximum fine for each violation. But, and they are handled case by case.
Okay.
The solicitor, most of our cases are pre-tried. And what, what that is, before they come before the court, the defendant goes with the solicitor and they talk about the case. And, and we, judges tell the litigants that it's probably a good idea to speak to the solicitor and see if you can work something out. They don't have to. They can plead not guilty. We'll put them on a trial calendar and have bench trial. If they have a trial and are found guilty, then when I'm conducting bench trials, I usually do the max fine. But a lot of the bench trials end up being negotiated in pre-trial as well. So often when I come over for bench trials, the solicitor works something out with people. So, you know, it, it seems to me they're buying time. But the prosecution of the cases, we leave up to the solicitor's office primarily for them to work it out because they are the ones who interact with code enforcement. They know what the facts of the case are, what. They know what the facts of the case are, what the facts are that supports the citation. And they work it out most of the time with the litigants. Uh, but if we see as court, when they bring it before us, we have to accept whatever they negotiate. And if we see what they negotiate is not appropriate for what we want to do with the particular case, then we can override that. But if we override it, we have to tell the city, the solicitor, the city, as well as the litigant, that you have a right to a trial. And that's very important. All of us, and I stress all of our judges, and I stress this all the time. Due process is very important in, in any court setting. But it's extra important in a municipal court setting because so many of these individuals, it's their first time ever being in court. You have a lot of folks just really nervous. They're scared. And you all's ordinances carry jail time with them. So, you know, people don't know that they're not going, some people, most people know they're not. But some people come in, they're really nervous, et cetera, et cetera. And, um, you know, we make sure they understand they can have a trial. And some of the trials we have, they prevail at the trial because the burden is on the city to prove somebody violated the code. It's not on an individual to prove it. But most of the cases code enforcement makes in this city, the litigants usually plead guilty or no law contingentary. The solicitor office uses the no law contingentary plea quite a bit, and you'll see that on the case count. Because that plea under the law is saying, I'll accept the punishment, but I'm not admitting that I did anything wrong. So a lot of litigants take care of that. But if we see where a litigant is continuously coming before the court and they've had a no law contingentary plea, we can reject that no law contingentary plea. And I'll give you a quick example. We had a case where vendors are setting up in a parking lot on a regular basis. And the person came to court on behalf of the corporate entity that owns the shopping center. And I was on the bench that day and gave them a dressing down, so to speak, uh, about the hazard involved with allowing that type of practice or not making sure that practice was eliminated, uh, some things that they could do. And uh, he was put back on the calendar again. And he had worked out a plea bargain with the solicitor that would have allowed him to pay a reduced fine. But he, but when he brought him, brought the plea before me, I asked him, had those uh remedies been taken care of? And um, they had not. And I spent a lot of time in court with that uh business owner or the representative of that corporate entity about some of the things that they could do to prevent that. And, and one simple one was put a no trespass sign up there. And if they set up, just call the police. They had not even done that. So I rejected the plea bargain and I did the max fine, Councilwoman Grimes. And uh, under knowing uncertain terms, let that person know that, that we're not going to tolerate uh continuous violation of a code section. And code enforcement knows that if it's, if they do it again, they're just going, they're going to give them more citations for allowing it. That's the property owner, not the people who are setting up shop in the parking lot. And uh, so that's just an example. So we, we try to oversee what the solicitor is doing. And but it's primarily with them and code enforcement to try to get the cases moved, Councilwoman Washington.
Thank you. That was, the example was very good. I was gonna actually ask a question towards that about increasing if they don't comply. And comment it. Thank you very much.
And, and I think the other part of your question, um, fans, you all approve the fines. So it, it may be time to do a revision of the fines, to go and look at them in some type of work session and see what type of adjustments. We are restricted somewhat under the law in terms of what we, what uh fine we can place on a violation. But that's city council approves the fine, sets the fines for the offenses.
Thank you. Um, before we come back to Mayor Cobble, I'm looking at the list you have here.
The revenue list?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, but does that represent the number of cases you've adjudicated? Uh, how would we get a feel for that?
It may not represent the number of cases adjudicated. It just represents the revenue that come, that has come into the court during, on those dates and during this time period. So it's not necessarily reflected of number of cases. For instance, this Jan, the first one, January 8th, 295, probably in my experience, that's one case. Somebody came in and paid that day. Whereas, uh, as I expressed, uh, the next one, on January 14th, eighty seven hundred dollars probably was a calendar, an arraignment calendar where there were multiple defendants and multiple fine payments made on that date. So one date, it could be somebody paying a fine from the week before. It could have been probation, paying um what was paid into them for a, a monthly period. And then they're making a payment uh on the fine back to the city. So this does not define the number of cases.
I was just trying to get a feel for the number of cases written by code enforcement versus the number of cases that wind up being adjudicated. Uh, because I'm still looking at a lot of properties. I mean, I can't ride by properties that haven't paid their taxes. Uh, but I can ride by a property and say, there are seven cars on the front line with the hood up. Someone's running a repair shop in the, uh, you know, at home. It's a shady mechanic. And it's been there for two years and no one's doing anything about it. Those are the things that we get beat up about. And I've complained about since I've been in this seat. And that is that people clearly doing things that are illegal. And it appears as if nothing's being done about it. I'm not necessarily pointing at the courts. Uh, but it's got to be a concerted effort on all of our behalf to clean some of this stuff up. And the impression we're getting is that people don't respect Stonecrest in terms of code violation. And there are too many of them that are going apparently unchecked because we can visually see violations. And those are the things that we really want to get our hand, handle on. Now, if that means greater fines, and you say that's more on us, but getting them to court, and once they get to court, they are dealt with fairly. And fairly means harshly in some cases. It doesn't always mean mercy. Sometimes it means giving true justice. And I, I know we can't dictate that. But at the same time, uh, fear and respect kind of go hand in hand. They need to know that you just don't violate the codes in Stonecrest and walk away and pay a small fine and come back next week with the same thing. And that's the impression given when we see this over and over again.
And code enforcement uh writes a citation. They put on there whether or not it's a second offense, third offense. When we get the docket for court, for arraignment calendar, on the docket, it has on it whether it's second offense, third offense, when the first offense um was made. And then we, as the judge, we can look and see how that first or second offense was adjudicated and what happened. But before it gets to us, it usually goes to pre-trial first. And the solicitor, the prosecutor, in my experience as an attorney, the prosecutor is the one whose approach to a case should be more reflective of what you just talked about in terms of what they're recommending in a plea bargain. You, you understand what I'm saying? If they recommend, we, we accept most plea bargains. Because that's, the, the process does not work if the solicitor's office can't adjudicate the cases. They, they talk to code enforcement. They are the ones, a judge doesn't talk to code enforcement. Unless it's a bench trial or amnesty day, uh, like Judge Scott just talked about. If, um, are we reject the plea and put it on a bench trial calendar or contempt calendar? We have calendars where people are held in contempt. I know one of our judges, um, he won't, sometimes some cases, he won't go all the way through their adjudication. He'll put them on another calendar to come back and see if they've complied with the code. But before we accept any plea, we always ask the solicitor or the litigant, has the, has the complaint, has the problem been taken care of? So if the problem has been taken care of, and code enforcement is in court. And sometimes we ask them to chime in, like Judge Scott said. And they would tell us, yes, Judge, we went out there to, and they usually go within the week of when the person has a court date. So they can say, we went out there yesterday, day before, uh, and they are taken care of, that whatever the violation was.
Right. Well, my only point is, it shouldn't take four and five years to bring some of these folks into compliance. Now, whether that's a code enforcement issue, solicitor issue, adjudication issue, or whatever the issue is, we need to find a solution because it's leaving a stain on the city. And I mean that literally in terms of folks simply not complying by the codes and some serious violations. So we will revisit it and we may well have to involve the courts in our discussions on how we're going to resolve this. And we've been talking about it too long with no solution. Just wanted to put that out there. Any other comment, Mayor Cobble, you wanted to?
I have, I have questions about the report itself, but we're over an hour on, on one item. So I'll, I'll yield. I'll get my answers some other way.
All right.
Mayor Prostem?
Councilwoman Graves?
Just have one question. Um, how long do we give an individual or a corporation to pay a fine?
Corporation the day of that the case is adjudicated. Now, if the solicitor's office asks to have the case reset to another calendar, I think most of our judges will go along with that recommendation from the solicitor. Because we can't get into the, the, the meat of a case before that person. If that person asks for a trial, then as uh, the, the, the court, we have to hear the facts from both sides of the case. In any criminal case, the burden is on the government to prove that a person has violated the law. The, the citizen or the person charged doesn't have to say, do anything because the burden is on the city. So when code enforcement uh gives out a citation and they come to court for arraignment and they pre-tried a case, a lot of times the solicitor, not a lot of times, but often the solicitor will ask to have the case reset because they're dealing with another lawyer. The lawyer has probably told them something that gives the solicitor justification to reset the case to another calendar. And usually when they come back on the next calendar, whatever those issues were, should have been taken care of. Not too long ago, um, and, and we, we had another solicitor. We've changed solicitors. We had Mr. Hunning. We have had him for a while, which is good when we can have one solicitor for a, um, a period of time to get to know how they operate and what they're doing. But recently we had another solicitor, Mr. Turner, um, was added to the process. So it's a process that he goes through to get the feel for what Stone, Stonecrest is looking for in terms of that. But their responsibility is to be responsive to what the government, um, what you all want them to do. They don't have to make a, a, a plea bargain with a corporate entity. And their, their position can be is max fine. And if you don't, you know, want to accept it, then we'll have a trial. And that's why judges, we don't get involved in that process. Because if they have to have a trial and they want to bring in witnesses, if the city want to bring in the witnesses to prove the violation, then um, the judge has to be independent of that process. So we adjudicate the case from the bench based on the facts that are given at a trial. And we don't have a whole lot of trials because I think our solicitor's office does an excellent job in moving the calendar alone. And that's kind of where we are with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Denmark, you have a comment?
Very much. I, I was gonna say, as the council is likely aware, my office serves as a solicitor. I think it would be useful uh at a future work session to have my solicitors uh come and address the council. I know a lot of conversations had about solicitor this and a solicitor that. But I think it would be appropriate for you to hear from the solicitor and to get our perspective on um our role, our challenges, and things that we would like to see to address the current concerns that you raised, Mr. Mayor Protem, that Councilwoman Grimes raises. So I would request that at a future work session, that solicitor be invited to come down so we can give our perspective um on court operations and what would be uh most beneficial in terms of achieving the outcomes that this council clearly wants.
Thank you very much. Anything else on this matter? Uh, Councilwoman Grimes?
I'm sorry, I just have one little bit for Attorney Denmark, and you already know I'm gonna ask the question. Max fine, how difficult is that for us to say for the solicitor? Max fine for the corporate especially?
Not at all.
So you just need a, a vote? We need to vote what we need? Tell me step by step what we need, just for me to say it?
No, no. And maybe I misunderstood your question. Are you asking how hard is it to recommend as a plea negotiation that they pay the max fine?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Um, well, it's not, I mean, we don't need anything from the council in order to do that. And in most cases, that's what we're doing, trying to get the maximum fine. Uh, and I've had a number of conversations internally to emphasize and reemphasize that our goal and our objective, we certainly want compliance. Because we're not here just trying to impose fines and raise money. That's, that's an ancillary um, um benefit. The goal is compliance to, to change the dynamics, to improve the quality of the community, uh, to get adherence to our code, property maintenance code, and every other code that we have. And so that's the goal. And we use fines as a tool to achieve compliance. The fine is not the goal in and of itself. Compliance is the goal. And we have a number of coercive remedies in our arsenal to achieve compliance, fines being one of them. And sometimes imposing the absolute maximum fine that the law allows is a powerful incentive to get compliance. But at all times, that is our goal. We want to bend people's behavior to our code. That's the goal.
I think we are absolutely saying the same thing, but I don't know if that is actually happening. That's how my eyes got open to even the solicitor, you know, my first, my first concern. But if, for the record, if you don't touch the purse strings of some people, then you're not doing anything. And I'm not talking about you in particular. I'm using that, that, that pronoun. Our goal, I hope, is to have enough bite and teeth in whatever we do. If it has to come through the purse, then that's fine with me because the folks are here making big money in our city and giving little in many instances. And so let the record reflect. And my voice says, max fine. I don't care if it's for a six-month period. And let's see how we can change the behavior. Because at the end of the day, you say compliance. But I want the behavior to change so that when we go to these properties, it doesn't look the same when they've paid a five hundred dollar fine when they should have been paying a twenty-five hundred dollar fine. So I don't want to get into it right here, but you, you know how I feel about it.
I, I certainly do. And that's why I think it would be important um to hear from the solicitor. Solicitor has boots on the ground. It can tell you exactly what's going on um from the solicitor's perspective. Our efforts to achieve compliance, and when I say compliance, I mean to get property owners and business owners uh to maintain their property in accordance with our code, to adhere to the standard that we've set forth in our code of ordinances. And so uh, the solicitor should be able, because, you know, judge is talking about solicitor, I'm talking about solicitor. But the solicitor needs to stand right there in front of you good folks and tell you himself.
Thank you.
If, Councilwoman, if I understand you as well, and that is, you're saying that sometimes it's cheaper to pay the fine than it is to come into compliance for some of the violators. And we need to revisit that portion of our codes where we set the fine to match today's, um, well, inflation rate. where we set the fine to match today's um, well, inflation rate, really what it amounts to.
Paris, Paris. Yes, uh huh.
Oh, Lord. I know, but I know, but we can reach the maximum.
But I don't, I don't think that our codes and our fines don't already exist within the reins that the law allows. So I just want to make sure that when you leave here, you don't have the impression that you can go beyond that. If you look at our fee schedule, um, our maximum fees, and Mallory did this work for us, and I think we voted on it la- at the end of last year. So I think this work is already done. Our fines are already set within the reins that the law permits. So you can't go beyond that. Now, the solicitor obviously, and, and we're not, uh, be careful, Councilwoman Grimes, make sure that we as a council don't uh, give an impression that we are trying to influence adjudication, uh, but um, the solicitor obviously has the ability, which is his or her job, is to determine what the plea deal is to get us, get us a plea, get us out, get us moving, get the calendar pushed, right? So as long as the fees and the fines uh, given are set within the reins that the law allows, that's the extent of which we can do legislatively. We can't go beyond the, the limits that the law has already set. So if law, if our fines and our fees are already set for the range and the solicitor is within that range, we can't take an ordinance and go beyond the range. So I, I think that work is already done. Now, maybe of course it's a conversation, like you said, in front with the solicitor to kind of understand how he or she comes up with the amount that they're uh, issuing. But our fees are already set for the reins that the law allows and we can't go beyond that.
But we, we, we can treat each of day as a separate offense.
And we've done that. I think we, we, we've already set, well, we have allowed for that to happen. I don't know that we're doing that, but our code allows for that.
Yes, our code allows for us to do it. And so, but what happens is they get cited on May the 10th. And then they come to court for the event they have on May the 10th. But then they'd be cited on the 10th, the 11th, the 12th, every single day. And we can stack a thousand dollars a day on them. So as opposed to coming down to paying a $1,000 fine, they come down there paying 20 separate $1,000 fines. Now that gets your attention.
Absolutely. And that's on the code enforcement side, right? To go on to, to go out and cite each day. So the code, to answer the legislative side, which I think is what you're trying to get to, we've already done the legislative work. The solicitor has to work within that. And then if we want to see more application of a daily citation, the fine can't be administered daily if the citation is not written daily. So that's on the code enforcement side to do a little bit more work. And I, I understand that they're doing better. We have a higher expectation for their outcomes, uh, but to do that daily requires a citation to actually be written daily in order for the fine to be issued daily. And so my point just was that we've done that legislative work, Mayor Protem, Councilman Fai, Councilman Grass, we've done the legislative work. And I think it's incumbent upon now our code enforcement side, our solicitor side, and then our, and our court side to make sure that what we've done legislatively uh, manifest um, in real time.
So it sounds like this meeting is gonna happen?
Yeah.
Really soon.
And the solicitor's office, you all have not been recommending uh, plea bargains without first making sure the people are in compliance at the time they make the recommendation. That's pretty consistent across the board. Now, whether you, and code enforcement is going, going out uh, within two or three days of court so that they can verify to the solicitor that the um, adjustments or whatever the repairs or whatever it is have been made. So we, we are not taking a lot of pleas where the person is fine, the case is adjudicated, and then they're given 30 days to comply. There have been some of those, but they are very rare after some of the discussions we've had with you all over the years. And I think the solicitor's office knows that as well.
Mayor Protem. Councilwoman Fai.
I will yield to Mayor Cobble.
Scenario question. Um, code enforcement sites, the calendar set, the code enforcement officer goes to do their check the day or two before court and they're in compliance. So when they come to court, the code enforcement officer says, hey, solicitor, they're in compliance. They're in compliance that day. Two days later, they're non-compliance. The likelihood of code enforcement going back out two days later is probably slim. So I imagine that what we're seeing is a correction, a very short-lived temporary correction. I'm in compliance because it's right before my court date. I know this, I know code's coming to check me. I get in compliance and then I, then I drop compliance two or three days later. Right? And, and rather that's because I don't have a huge fine or not, but I'm in compliance when I come to court. So I expect to have a deal uh, that's significantly low or no fine at all because I'm in compliance that day. But I think that maybe there's some work to be done, and I don't, I don't know who, where, and how, but maybe there's some work to be done on what happens a few days later after I've come into compliance, I'm set with court, I'm through it, and now I've parked, I've, I've parked that car back over there again. Or I've let the grass get too high again, or I've put that construct, that silk fence back up. Like, I wonder if what we're seeing is just a repeat of what they've come into compliance with previously. And because we clear them off the calendar, they're done, we probably don't go back and check two or three days later, maybe even a week later. So the repetition that we see, maybe it's not that it's not being addressed, it's that it's reoccurring shortly thereafter. And not until code goes back maybe a month or two later do we find it again, and that's the repeat offender. But maybe the repeat offender is actually the two and three and four day offender that does it immediately following. And I only come into compliance right before my court date because I know code's coming to check my compliance.
You looking for an answer?
Well, I'm looking for, if that's our problem, then, if that's what's happening, then we're looking to solve the wrong issue.
May I?
Sure.
The corporate cases that we see mostly are like they own property in a subdivision, apartment complexes, condo complexes, the code enforcement cases we see on those are the siding needs to be repaired, the sidewalk is torn up, block, et cetera, et cetera. Once those repairs are made, then it's usually not a scenario where they tear it back up two days later. Now, the parking one is one that uh, we probably can see if they're parking on the grass or parking in non-designated areas, they can go back to parking it after the court date. Uh, but like you said, that's code enforcement and um, I've been seeing an uptick in their efforts to uh, enforce the code. Uh, and you know, they're directed to go back out there two or three days after court, a week after court. I'm sure they'll do it.
I'm, I'm just curious on how we figure out what their repeat offender.
But remember, they put on the citation, whether it's a second, a third, a fourth offense. And I think the solicitor's office takes that into consideration and we take that into consideration as well. And the example I had about the vendors in the parking lot, um, you know, I, I, I just happen to be the one to have had that um, complex in court before. So I knew it, but we had a new solicitor um, who was working that day and, and you know, and he's, he's going to be real good in terms of uh, you know, you all's choice to have him in court, but he's being trained. He's, and, and it wasn't his fault. I don't even want to make it seem like it was some fault involved. But I knew at that time what efforts should have been made to alleviate that problem. And none of the efforts had been made, so.
That's a good example because we're, that's where we see repeat is that, that vendor situation happening in the parking lots over and over and over. They've come through court, they paid the fine, or they came into compliance, they did everything. And then the next month, they're back out for the next holiday.
Or they do it on Saturday.
Or they do it on Saturdays, Sundays. Those are repeat things that we continue to see, but I mean, just how, how do we narrow down what that is and try to, and just try to mitigate that as much as possible? Which I think is, is more than just adjusting fines and fees and, and more than, I, I think it's more than, I think we need to really hone in on what the repeat offense is that we continue to see. And I mean, after we've walked through the full process, after we understand beginning to end in the cycle, what, narrowing that down, I think we're still talking way too general about these repeat offenses and we're not getting down to the roots of what, what those exactly are uh, and how we can stop those. And I think that's a little bit more work maybe on our end to just have a, a roundtable conversation um, with code. And I'm not saying formally here on the dais, maybe that's just a, a, you know, a, oh, a literally a working session um, with code to just talk through the weeds of that.
Absolutely. I, I do, I agree with you. Absolutely. We need to have that conversation ongoing. Okay, Councilman Fai, you had a question?
Um, the only thing I just wanted to make sure is, um, Judge Miller, when your staff uh, sends over those lists of recommendations, um, what, regarding code, um, could you make sure to CC me?
The ones where I was talking about where we had some duplicate codes and some that were not enforceable, et cetera?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else before we move on?
We'll send it to everybody.
And Judge Miller and Judge Scott, we thank you so much for that presentation. All righty. Next item on the agenda for discussion. We um, had a financial report last month. And in that financial report, we tried to rush June um, into it. But that was really pushing it and we thought we were uh, a little bit ahead of ourselves. And um, I'm sorry, that was me.
Oh.
That was me. And we got it in June. And we hadn't had a ti- chance to really look at it, so we're going to make sure that we give it a good 30 days for us to get the report, review it, and have meaningful discussions about it here if you're so inclined. Uh, so to give us the monthly financial report, Ms. Gaines, you're covering the month of May?
Mayor Protem, before Finance Director Gaines talks, I, I have a, I want to understand what you just said. I don't, I don't fully comprehend what you just, what you just said. So you said we had May, the May report in the last work session and you're saying we rushed it?
We did. It was uh,
Who's we? You said we rushed it. Who was we?
We've been uh, the schedule makers wind up putting it on the schedule for June, the first week in June. And the report was just complete at the end of May. So they had only had a day or two to reconcile uh, the May's report before it had to be entered into municipal. Really, they didn't have a day or two to rush it in. In fact, they gave us copies on the dais, which meant that most of us hadn't had time to go through it. So what I'm saying is that a report that's due in July should cover May's report, which means you've had all of June to reconcile the report and get copies to council, review it. And here you have a chance for meaningful dialogue about that report.
Hmm, I want to make sure I understand the words you're using. When you say for who to reconcile, um, are you saying that you want the council to have more?
Counsel then have to.
Digest the report? Or are you saying staff? Because the, the report, the month's closeout is always going to be the same time each month, right? So like for your example, the May report, the May financials will close out the first week of June, maybe the second week, right? Which will always be our next work session.
And that's not, that's not enough time to get it on the agenda.
Okay. That's what I was trying to understand. So when you say reconcile, you, you don't mean reconcile, you mean for the council to review?
Reconcile, reconcile is reconcile.
Not when you're talking finance.
Look at it and you make sure you have in there what you want to get in there.
Because what I don't want is, I don't want the.
We'll not go through a forensic audit before it gets to it. No, just making sure we have.
Public to think that we're producing a report that staff has not reconciled. So that's why I just want to be, especially in this arena, I want us to be careful about where. So you're saying that for the, like the May report, you want it the month later? So the June report will be in August?
Yes.
Okay. And I don't have any problem with that. I just want to understand what you're saying. You want to, he wants a month in arrears after the month is closed, which I don't have a problem with, but I want to make, I want us to emphasize every meeting until the end of the year that the council requested that the report is what will seemingly be 60 days behind. What I don't want is the public saying we're reporting two months late. Because we pushed for that report to be monthly, to be the month before. We pushed for that. And so staff created reports, ran it that way, and analyzed it that way. If we're changing that, I have no problem with it. I want all six of us to be champions of that change. So when someone says you're 60 days behind in your reporting, no, we're not. We ask that the reports be submitted and uploaded 60 days behind.
No, we didn't.
It is.
Uh, when the report's ready, they can upload it if that's a week, whenever it's ready to be uh, or whenever they're ready.
You didn't want the report out until after she's presented it to council?
In terms of getting it on the agenda, you cannot get it on the agenda because it must go through municipal. And we, and we look at it two weeks before it's published.
I understand.
And that can't happen.
I understand it, but you wanted the council to get the report and it pre-presented to the council before it's published on the website. Now, yes, that's what you asked for.
Not necessarily.
I mean, if that's what you, if you wouldn't change that, that's okay too. But you asked that the report be presented to the council in a work session before it's published to the website for the public. So if you're saying now, whenever the report is done and reconciled, it can go on the website before it's presented to council, she needs to know that. Or are you saying, if you're keeping the same directive you gave her, which is don't post it before the council gets it in a meeting, then all I'm saying is the council needs to be a champion for the June monthly report will be presented in August.
No one said don't post before you get it in a meeting.
Yes, you did. That's why she, and matter of fact, you can go back to the tapes because you'll ask her every time as it's posted and she'll say, I will post it after this meeting. Tape don't lie. Tape don't lie.
I hope not.
It doesn't. Play it back. You ask her every meeting and she says the same thing every meeting. I'll post it after this meeting.
Make a point.
I want clarity so that our favorite folks in our community are not saying that the reports are late. You're asking for the report to be published to the public and to the council two months after it closes, which is not what we've been doing. And I'm okay with that. But I want to make sure that the world knows that is a request from the council. So that, so the May report will, is in July. That's 60 days. Your June report will be in August. George, that's 60 days.
Madam Director.
Don't be mad at me.
Has this report been published? Has this report been published?
The May numbers, good evening, counsel. How are you guys?
Good evening.
Mayor and counsel. The May numbers are online.
Thank you very much.
The June numbers are not online. So let me just back up a little bit. We were given a May report. Not a lot of conversation was had, so I want to reiterate the May report and give everyone a little bit of time to con- have a conversation, ask some questions. We're still closing out June as that's a mid-year close, so we want to take a little bit additional time with that. So that will be presented next work session.
So June has not been closed out yet and is not ready to be published. Okay.
We're still closing out June as that is a mid-year and it takes a little bit more detail. Also with our expenses and out of town and everything, so we want to make sure that that is closed correctly.
And so you will post June in?
Finish.
August. Which will be how many days? Go ahead, say 60. Go ahead.
Sixty.
Uh, June is only 30 days from August in my calendar, but go ahead.
All of June, all of July is 60 days.
But uh, yes, tonight I just want to go and review some of the revenue that we have and allow council to ask some questions that they may or may not have asked in May.
All right, then proceed with that.
That's the June.
Yes. Yes. Okay, so to date, we have collected $6,113,390 in revenue. We've broken it down by class so you can see that the bulk of our money is coming from taxes. We've broken it down by class, so you can see that the bulk of our money is coming from taxes. We have permits, license and permits, charges for services, fine forfeitures, revenue, miscellaneous revenue. This is a little small, but as you can see, it kind of goes into more detail of the revenue that we've collected thus far. A lot of our revenue come from our taxes, our exercise taxes, our alcohol and beverages, building permits, those types of revenues. So we're about thirty-three percent into our collections. And as always, the majority of our collections will come in the fall towards the end of the year. This is just a little pie chart just to show you the various classes that we collect revenue in. This details our expenses. And we're pretty much breaking even with our expenses and our revenues at this point in the year. We're moving along right. We're in a good space. We're collecting as we should. Um, expenses do go up depending on if we have projects, if we have things of that nature. So we're in a really good position for FY twenty-five. Some of our other revenue accounts that we don't talk about a lot in our other expense account, we have our hotel motel, which we've collected one point one million dollars thus far. For our capital projects and our splosh, we've collected one point six. Our total in our other accounts of two point seven million dollars. Our judges did an awesome job of reviewing our court revenue. And to go over some updates that we have going on right now, we have welcomed a new grants administrator, Kiara Drain. We've promoted, um, one of our accountants, Mr. Derek Hock, to the senior accounting position and we're going to backfill that. We had some solicitations out, our street resurfacing, which I'm sure you're glad to know that we'll be starting soon. Also, um, our athletic, our athletic complex parking lot project is going out, uh, soon. We have our fairington park exercise equipment supply and installation services solicitation. And we're working on gazebo and monument signage solicitation, which should be released in the next week or so. So I want to open up questions that anyone may have regarding any revenue and or expenses that have been collected and are expended through May.
Ms. Gaines.
Yes, sir.
Uh, to be clear with the request from the mayor, this is the June's report?
No, sir. We are reviewing May.
Everything there showed June when I was looking at it?
Yes, sir.
Is that saying this being reported in June, uh?
It was reported in June to reflect the numbers of May.
Okay. Can you bring it back up again?
Yes, sir. Um, any particular slide or just?
You start with number one.
Okay.
I go- What does it say, June twenty twenty-five revenue by class?
I was preparing June and realized that we needed more time to get the numbers a little bit in more detail.
You rushed this up in there? Okay.
And this is what was uploaded into MUNICODE, so I wanted to clarify before I got into the presentation exactly what I was doing.
Well, this is actually May and not June?
Yes, sir. These numbers are pretty close to the presentation and the report that's posted online for May.
Okay. Are June's numbers ready?
No, sir.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments?
Mayor Protem?
Councilwoman Graves?
Okay, Ms. Gaines, you know, I will ask a question, so I want to be clear.
Yes, ma'am.
Even though this says this report is an account of financials through the end of the June, end of June of full year twenty twenty-five, the data that we see, the numbers that we see are actually through the end of May.
The reports were run the first week in June, which does not reflect a closed-out month of June.
Still confused. I got to ask the teacher one more time. Teacher. What am I looking at? May's numbers or June's numbers?
You're looking at May's numbers.
So in my head, I want to see May where it says June, and that will be okay for me to change that in what I look at because this is reflective of May, not June.
Yes, ma'am. I will change these and give you all update. I will email you a changed update.
I just want to be clear, you know, what I see and what I, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other questions before we go into analyzing this? Mayor Cobble.
So in the packet, counsel, the link that Ms. Gaines has to the May report is there in your packet. It ends May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. So that's the May budget report. Those are the May numbers, if you go back to your packet. The link she has to the June monthly report, those are the numbers as of the day she ran the report. What she's saying is because it's our, because, because it's June, uh, which is our mid-year, the effort is just a little bit more, uh, to get the closing numbers for June. So the report you, which is the same thing that happened in May. I got you, Ms. Gaines. The June report that you have in your packet was prepared for you in July. But what is she saying is that the numbers are, do not reflect a complete June closeout, which is, I'm assuming why Mayor Protem is asking to move that, these reports to the next month. So that the full month is closed and the next month is given time for them to run reports and get them out to you. So in the packet, you have the May report, May numbers as of the end of May. Then the next link is your June report. There, it is June numbers. All she's saying is that those numbers may change when the final June is closed out entirely.
And you don't have to assume it. That's what I've been trying to tell you a whole while. And that is that we don't want to have to do a corrective report. That's where the confusion comes in. I'd rather wait until it's ready before we do it.
Mayor Protem?
Councilwoman Graves?
Ms. Gaines, what, so in the month of May, you closed out May on?
We close out May, um, usually around about
About the tenth?
Yeah, I was going to say, around about the tenth, twelfth of the month, depending on how the days fall. Because we need those numbers to kind of finalize out. Those bank statements don't come out until probably about the fifth business day of the month. So, you know, we have to have something in time and it's mandatory that I put something on the calendar to present to you all. So we close out and we probably don't have a full closeout and a full guaranteed report until about mid-month. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Which, Councilwoman Graves, lines up with our work session, right? So Mayor Protem wanted the reports to be on work sessions, which are every second Monday, which makes it difficult to close the month out and have the report ready for the agenda packet, which is due two weeks before the work session. So if the month's closeout is two weeks after the month ends, but the packet for that meeting is due two weeks before, essentially he's asking her to produce a report where the month hasn't closed out yet in order to meet the agenda deadline.
No, 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 no.
So you're changing that now?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, so we're changing that now so that the report, so that when the agenda item is due, the report has officially closed. The books have officially closed, right? That's why you're pushing it out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, now you have a good one.
Yes. I'm explaining to her why it's an issue now, and so you're asking to push it so that the month can close out entirely, which gives her time to meet the agenda deadline for the following month. Got no problem with it. I just wanted to make sure that we're all communicating the same message that when they see that, because people believe that because May thirty-first hits, the report should be up June first. So when they don't see the May report until July first, then they get to typing that we behind in our financials.
We know we're not.
But we know, that don't mean no lot. We know a lot that we don't champion. So my point was champion the change and explain it to your constituency so that you can combat the stone crest behind again on a financials. No, we're not.
Thank you. Any discussion on the May financial report? Whether it says June or not, any discussion on the May financial report? Ms. Gaines?
Yes, sir.
Um, just looking at the way you summarize things. And I'm looking at, uh, page one of twenty-one. Date it May thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, budget, report, account summary. Whereas there's percentage remaining. And it shows greater than a hundred percent, and I'm just trying to understand how that calculation takes place on several of these.
That's the percentage that's calculated within the system. The algorithms may be different, but it's supposed to show the remaining balance from each line. So that total at the end is kind of not reflective of the entire document.
Total, I'm not having an issue with this. The ones in between where it says, uh, percentage remaining, a hundred and six point seven nine. So we've, greater than a hundred percent remaining.
You said page twenty-one, right?
Page twenty-one. I'm sorry, one of twenty-one. I'm sorry, that's my fault.
Sorry.
One of twenty-one. I'm just trying to understand how that's done. Is that just a quirk?
Of the, of the May report or the June report?
The May report.
Put that on my page one of one. Yeah, so the, the system, the system is calculating each line by line. So it has its own algorithm, algorithms of calculating the percentage remaining, but it should be overall per class and or per department. So if it exceeds one oh six, that's their algorithm and it's calculating in a way that I-
Okay. I mean, I, I can take a, an answer later on. I'm just pointing that out that that concerned me when I saw it. And maybe there's a logical explanation for it. So, um, just make note of that, that I have concern in.
Isn't that, so it's calculating the percentage that's remaining from what was budgeted and then spent, right? So the fiscal year, so it's got the total budget, and I didn't do the math on this, I'm just looking at it now, but it's got the total budget, so let's, let's use the second line, public utility tax, right? Our current budget is what, thirty-five grand?
Yes.
The fiscal activity is fifty-five grand, right? So the variance is twenty grand, which is a hundred and fifty-seven percent of what was spent versus what was budgeted. Or even if you go with the first line, the total, the current budget is two point six million, the fiscal activity is seventeen thousand, so there's a remaining two point six forty-three, which leaves a ninety-nine percent. It's, it's taking the variable and just making a percentage of it. Some is positive, some is negative, just depending on what was budgeted versus what, what the fiscal activity was. So this is just a percentage of the ver- of the column before it, of the variance. It's just a percentage of it. So ninety-nine percent is remaining on that line or ninety-nine percent was spent over the line, depending on if there's a negative in front of it or not. So this, this column is just a percentage of that same variable number.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Cobble. I'm going to hold you responsible for her answers.
Okay. Yeah, so now I saw what you were looking for. I was looking at the bottom of the page, but yeah, it, that's the algorithm within the ERP system.
Mayor Protem?
I'm sorry, uh-
Oh, if the mayor has finished, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Graves?
So, so my rain manness won't let me accept that.
Okay.
So if you're telling me that the public utility tax had a budget of thirty-five thousand three hundred and the fiscal activity is fifty-five, six, six, seven, eight, ten, I understand that the variance here is unfavorable because it is twenty thousand dollars over the budget.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So where it has unfavorable, it has parentheses. And I think if the parentheses were there and even on the, um, the percent remaining, that lets me know that we, we've gone over budget almost fifty-seven percent, yeah? Is that what, is that what that one fifty-seven represent?
Yes, it means that we've collected that much more than what we anticipated collecting.
So this is revenue, not expenses?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I, if y'all just give me a minute, I'll come in. I promise y'all.
Yes, ma'am.
I love to walk with you with the rain man. We'll do it together.
Yeah.
I'm good. Okay.
I'm not a fan of-
Yeah, if you, you want to scroll down to expenses, it'd be a little bit easier.
I'm not a fan of the verbiage here, the variance, the favorable, unfavorable. It does kind of confuse you, but yes, ma'am.
Negative is the-
People's man.
It's, it's another, I'm sorry, hold it, hold it. Where are we now? Who has, who wants the floor? That Councilwoman?
It is, yes.
It's the permit to see.
She just don't see that. She don't see that.
Well, I have, I have one question.
Councilwoman Graves, in the mic, please.
I just want to make sure I'm clear. So we're going to use May as the example.
Yes, ma'am.
So we closed out May on June, around June fifteenth.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's, hmm, probably will fall after the work session. So I'm, I'm assuming Mayor Protem is asking for us to go over those numbers the following work session, but not for us to delay posting. Is that correct?
I mean, I had, I said nothing about posting. I don't know where that came from. No, I didn't. You can run it all you want.
So I have been posting only after we all have discussed it and talked about it. So that's typically when I post. Him and I had a sit-down and, um, he had a better understanding of the closing out in that it was just a little rough to get it closed out and on the calendar by that work session when sometimes that date falls later. So hence the reason why you guys see the June on the presentation. I wanted to give you something because you require that we discuss in-
So even if we change the reporting to the next month, that, that shouldn't delay the posting or? So Mayor Protem, I'm just trying to confirm.
I mean, I know, I don't dictate that. I'm just saying that, uh, you set a date for posting when it's ready to be posted. Uh, but in terms of getting it on the agenda for a work session, I would not put something on the agenda for discussion uh, that has not, uh, gotten all the documents that it need to support it. Yeah. Uh, I will see the manager's going to solve this.
I, I certainly hope I can add to it. When we do it the way that Councilwoman Graves is suggesting, what, what she's saying, that's what we've done traditionally, and then you all came and, and changed it. And so now if we go back to that, if we go back to that, it will coincide so that May is actually in July. Like it, it's supposed to. I think what also provided some, uh, moments that were not very clear on this particular agenda is because the months are listed. And had we just put May twenty twenty-five, we wouldn't have this. And then, um, again, I think in the scheduling of the item, Ms. Gaines was not aware that we were going to go back and just do May today. And so she prepared for June and that caused a portion of the, of the confusion. But going forward, like in Ju- in August, you will see June. And I also want to go over one more time about the closing of the month. It does require those ten to fifteen days after the month closes for the very reasons that she discussed, but also so that it, there are some other transactions that are not just automatic and that the, uh, finance team has to manually go and do. So those are some of the other reasons. Also, the June one, as she mentioned, is very important because we also use that data for when we try to determine how we're going to do our budget adjustments. And so we want to give our finance department some additional time to give us good numbers to make good, solid recommendations to the council. So, um, I support Ms. Gaines in having those additional days and then also so that we are reporting actually in a, a month in arrears.
Thank you. Anyone else want to fix this?
Yeah, Mayor Protem?
Uh, there's none fixed.
Let me get, let me get one more attempt at this. We are going to post our financial report when it's prepared.
When it's ready.
Which will be likely an accounting month in arrears, not a calendar month, an accounting month in arrears. We will present to the city council that very report in the month after the accounting month closes, which will look like to a normal person sixty days. So council, be prepared that at the work session, you will see the financial report for a month that has already closed. On the website, general public, you will see the report when the accounting month has closed.
And that's what we've been saying since we opened this subject.
We're all, we're, we all in agreement? We're, we're.
Now, when you say, when you say we will, who's we?
About what?
We will close this out and we'll have this ready by this date.
Finance, yeah.
Oh, so we being finance?
Yeah.
Oh, see, oh, that was you speaking. Not you.
I'm providing clarity.
All right, you're speaking.
She didn't say it a few times, and then everybody was confused. So I'm just providing clarity on what the plan is going forward.
You put June on the May's report. I'm talking about.
Because you asked her to put May the last. We try not to say that out loud now, but you keep pressing it.
Yeah, you keep pressing. If you let it alone in the beginning, we could have been moving on. Okay. It's nice to be lighthearted about this, but in the end, we've got to make sure the numbers are right.
We absolutely do.
Sure the numbers are right, and we will serve no numbers before it's time.
Yes, sir.
Make sure the numbers are ready to go before we serve them up.
Mayor Protem?
Councilwoman Grimes?
The mayor doesn't always clarify for me, so I got to go back and do what I need to do. Here we go. The month of May takes almost forty-five days to close out. So you need, you need some time from the thirty-first. You need a few days in the next month.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's not a normal thirty days. Right? So anybody who's looking for you to be ready for with something at the second day of the next month after a month, that's not even, that's not legit.
No, ma'am. The banks don't even release their bank statements until the fifth.
So it makes sense that you need that time. But what, when will you show up? You will show us May. You'll take the rest of the days after, say, June tenth up through when before you post. Are you going to go all the way to the end of June? For May, or are you just going to take a few days? Are we going to go to July's work session? Help me understand. That's the piece I'm confused about.
So when the month close, and we're still using May, May thirty-first, I will have a closed month by the fifteenth of the month.
June?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm there.
Yes, depending on how the days fall, we do have some weekends that.
I'm there.
Holidays that come within that. Yes, ma'am.
But that May will not be presented to the council until July's work session. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, so you need a month, a few days, and then we'll get it the next month on the work session.
Yes.
Okay, don't say nothing else. That's it.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, we wouldn't be here. But oh, I didn't say that.
Mayor Protem?
I did have a couple of other small questions. And just wanted to use. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Washington, you were.
Mayor Protem? Yes, I don't know if this question is projected to you or to Gia, but I'm going to ask it. First of all, I want to welcome the new grant administrator, Kay Train, I believe that's the name. But I wanted to ask the question, what is the projected goal? You know, for the grant writer for the year, or what specific areas is that grant writers going to target in writing grants for us? I see so far on according to here, for the month of May, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. But year to date, six eighteen ninety-eight. On the June twenty, well, it's May twenty twenty-five, other expenses up on the, on your chart?
I think that's one for the city manager.
Yeah, she looked like she wanted to say something, but I'll get to that.
No, I just wanted to say that the grant administrator wants, well, first of all, we are so happy to have her. As you all know, that is one of the positions that we have been looking for and waiting on in in great anticipation. But we have already, myself and Finance Director Gaines have already looked at some of our, started to look at some of our major projects that need some, may need some additional funding. And also some of the projects that we already have on the CIP schedule for twenty-five and twenty-six, and see if we can get some additional funding for that. But I know for certain right now, we're looking at botanical garden, we're looking at some parks and recreation, we're looking at some of our other park improvements that we're planning on doing. Some of the, some additional, I'll say, transportation-related grants. And then other ways that we can look at other opportunities to partner, partner with other entities and look at additional funding there. So those are the major ones that we looked at from the beginning so that it is in line with what's already being budgeted, what has been budgeted or in one of the outlining CIP years, so that we can add additional funding sources. And you'll see those if we are able to get some of those grants. It'll be recognized at the top of the revenue portion on the CIP schedule. Also, all of the grants that we apply for in our financial management policy, I believe it still states that we would bring those to council for acceptance of those. And then also any ones that we are going to actively go after. Myself or Ms. Gaines will send some notification to council just to let you all know that we are looking at those. But those are some of the ones that she, I know, has already started looking, looking at. And she's only been here, what, two weeks? So that's what we have. So but I know occasionally, GMA is very good about grant opportunities. And then sometimes additional, other entities and or municipalities may share some of those opportunities with us as well. And we're also certainly looking at those as well.
Thank you very much.
To answer your question, I think you were looking at the expenses. Those are just small expenses that have been expended from the grants category to date. So it's not really revenue. Those are just expenses. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I know you just gave us the numbers and I appreciate it. But some of these questions I have are probably for the city manager as well. And that is, I'm looking at ARPA. I had the note here, so let me a second. I'm sorry. Under ARPA on page twenty-one of twenty-one, Adam, city manager. There is a line two thirty. Can you tell us what's going on with the ARPA rescue plan?
Line two, line two thirty is, two thirty is the fund for ARPA. I am not, I don't have privy to what you're specifically looking at. But I know that Director Gaines and her staff are looking to what's shown on the screen is just what we've spent year to date. However, the full detail, I believe they are still working on breaking that out so that each project, you'll see each project and the expense associated with the project for the remainder of the ARPA funds. I think for FY twenty-five, if I make no mistake, I think we're around five point three million dollars that is left for ARPA. And that includes our four transportation projects. It includes the gym flooring. It includes.
Other park upgrades.
Other park upgrades.
Land development.
And then there are some property acquisitions as well. So if you don't see it on that, I think myself and Ms. Gaines, we were scheduled to have a meeting today. We meet tomorrow. And by the time we get to the June report, I think she'll be able to have it more detailed then. If you don't see it. And again, I'm not privy to what you're looking at, ma'am. That is true, but when he asked.
Period activity shows zero, but it does show twenty-seven thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars moved from the general fund to ARPA. But anyway, you know what I'm looking for so we can have greater discussion when we talk about it.
Yeah, certainly. And things like that, it could have been a transfer for a reallocation of something that may have been coded incorrectly. I'm not sure. But it's twenty-three thousand. I'm not sure what that is. It sounds like just a regular payment on.
Some upgrades to the gym.
Yeah.
Okay, now I just know that we acted on some of these.
To the, to the gym, it was.
Exactly what it was.
Okay, I just know that we acted on some of these items in January. And I just wanted to see the status of them. So that's what I was looking for. Okay, one other for our chair of URA. That is on page twenty of twenty-one. And it speaks of Stonecrest URA activities, revenue and expenses. I'm just trying to get a feel for what's going on with the revenue with URA.
So, I'm sorry, I do apologize.
Who has it?
You can take it. I'll fill in what you need.
Again, I don't see that one up there specifically, but in terms of revenue for URA, that includes our rent payments. Lease agreements that we currently have in in play. We also, from that fund, pay some of the expenses out of there for the maintenance of City Hall. And then we also obviously pay for the debt service that we have for the URA, for this building. And Sam's building as well. Those typically come out in February, I believe it is. And so that is what that is. But the revenue obviously comes from the rent and lease agreements that we have in place.
Yes, and we do use that account to pay our debts, our debt service, which comes out in February and in August.
Okay. I just showed that the revenue was three hundred and eighty-two thousand and the expense was forty-one six. Okay.
Mayor, keep in mind now that the Sam's building no longer has a tenant. So we will not be receiving rents from from the former Sam's building anymore. We'll still receive it from this building. Remember, the URA owns this building and the former Sam's Club building. This building collects rent from its tenants. And then, of course, we also pay the bills that run this building out of that account. Again, but the, you'll see, you will see a decrease because the the rent roll has ended for the Sam's building and its revenue.
Perhaps that's a discussion for a URA meeting for which we have not had one this year. So I know you're going to schedule one real soon.
December.
No, you officially have two that are supposed to occur, one in January and one in July.
Yeah, we're getting ready. Well, it has to be two a year. I don't think it says January or July, but.
I believe it, but we adopted. But anyway, that's another.
We're just not going to have.
That's a URA discussion.
We have some real estate matters to talk about for the URA, so we will have one.
Okay, all right. Council, any other questions on the finance report? Here is none. The next finance report we will receive will be for the month of June. We will receive it in the month of August work session. That's fine.
Yes, sir. So he's not doing it right now, right?
No, 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 no.
You're going to wait till August. Okay, all right. I thought you queued her up. I was like, oh, hell, here we go. Okay.
Calm down. Have a sip of coffee. Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Nope, nope, only got one item left. This will be short. Next item on the agenda is for initial proposal of mapping for the SLIP CID. Mayor Protem will give you portions of that report now, and it will be swift. I will, if you.
One second. Andrew, can you get us back?
I'm sorry.
I was asking Andrew to get us back up here. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. We had supplied to us a, an outline as to what it would take to establish a CID in the city of Stonecrest. And it is also addressed in the charter itself.
Mayor Protem?
I'm sorry, Councilman Fox.
I apologize, but for the, but for the sake of the public, is there a way we can get the presentation up on that, up on the dais screen?
That should have been a part of the package. So that part should have been there.
It is, but.
I'm just saying that to the staff. No, that's, that's separate.
Hey, 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 hey.
You can do that? No, it's a little over. That's not what we're looking for, but you can hold right there. I'll get to it. Let me just say that what I'm giving you is what I've given you before. And that was a template to kind of outline the things that must be done in order to establish a CID. And that was supplied to us by our city attorney's office. And let me just go through them right quick. There are some steps and then don't necessarily have to occur in this order. And I'll tell you why. We're going to see what you're going to see in a minute there. There are six things that must take place in order to create a CID. Designate a geographical area where the district is to be located. Adopt a resolution consenting to the creation of a CID. Need to have a written consent to the creation of a CID by the landowners. Need to obtain a certificate from the Cab County Tax Commissioner. You need to appoint and slash elect CID board members and execute the corporation agreement. Now, those are the seven things that we pointed to as being necessary to create a CID. Tonight, one of the most critical things that we have to do is to identify a mapping area where the CID will exist. So if you could get us back to where we just were, that would give us the intro to that. Did you see it? Do you want to see it again? Back up to the person. Right there, right there, right there, right there. Good, thank you. Go on, skip one more. Well, hold it right there. One quick. What we have is a Stonecrest zoning map with approximate location of the proposed Stonecrest Latonia Industrial Park CID outlined in red. We're going to get to that in a second. You have a concept map of the northern area proposed for the SLIP CID. Go ahead. Okay, the top portion of the map of Stonecrest. That's, no, that is not in your package. No. That's why she's doing it there. The top portion of the map of Stonecrest has the industrial properties. Latonia Industrial Boulevard kind of goes through the middle of it. The suggested area for this map is going to be mostly in that area. Okay, go to the next slide. The part that's outlined in red shows industrial properties. And you'll see the biggest road in there is the Latonia Industrial Boulevard. Move to the next one. It's kind of difficult to put that together, but that's just north of the city of Latonia. Go to the next one. And that brings us down to Covetown Highway. Covetown Highway is going to be the boundaries to the south of the CID for the Stonecrest Latonia Industrial Park. So that is a general area of the CID. Now, what is expected of the city?
That's the. The lines before you go there?
Okay, yes, ma'am.
You said, who came up with these lines? You, you said, "we," and then, but who, who is "we"?
Um, I talked to members of the La Tonia Industrial Council and told them that we were getting ready to propose a map. And they had already suggested one, and I said, "We'll take a look at it."
You said, "We are getting ready to propose a map," who's "we"?
We, we, members of council.
Who were those members of council?
I'll name George Turner as one, I'll name Tara Graves as one, I'll name Alicia Washington as one, but this is a work session, we'll get it on the agenda to vote for the entire council to accept it.
Sure, 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 I'm just, I'm just trying to get familiar with the conversation, okay? So, three members of council what, wanted to, um, start working on a map for the CID.
Uh, let me back, let me back you up.
Okay.
Um, the charter allowed for the development of a CID.
Right.
And we've been talking about this for three, four years. We even had a CID committee to go over some of this and discuss whether or not we wanted to advance the CID. And I believe a general consensus is, but we'll know when we vote that it is. But it's in the charter that it can happen, and it can happen without the city's, uh, consent really. But, uh, personally, vote of one, I suggest we advance it, and I've been pushing to advance it, and we'll continue to, uh, get the CID up and, uh, running and to, um, put everything in place, allow it to be created and move forward.
Okay, no problem, just trying to get context on, on the lines, okay? So, you, Tara, and Alicia were already working on, uh, a map that would have lines?
No, no.
Okay, read again then. You said "we," and then I asked you who "we" was, and then you named you, Tara and Alicia.
Oh, you said who, uh, was in, anyway, uh, we're moving.
I'm trying to understand the line.
I don't understand why you need to understand all of that, we're giving you this information.
Definitely need to understand where the lines came from.
We need to understand.
We in this room, we listening to this meeting, we need to understand the lines. I'm just trying to understand the lines before you move on.
Uh, I'll take questions at the end, okay?
Come on, Mayor Protem, this is.
Yeah, yeah, no, please stop, please stop this, please stop this, please stop this, please stop this, please stop. Please stop, no, you're out of order, ma'am. We have to have an outline for a map for the CID. And this is what has been laid on the ground so far. Counselor can accept it one hundred percent as is. A counsel can suggest totally changing it to something else. But in order to get it started, you put something on the table. This is on the table as a suggestion of a map for the CID as specified in the charter. Now, any questions about the map itself?
Yes, Mayor Protem, I have questions about your.
All right, Mayor Cobble, questions about the map?
I'm gonna go back to the question I asked you ten seconds ago. You have lines, which is fantastic. I'd like to know where the, did the suggestions come from about the boundaries for the CID?
Read the charter, and it tells you it should be within the industrial area and within City of Stonecrest boundaries. And there you have it. And those are industrial property.
Your answer is, the charter says we have to have a map to my question about.
Yes.
Where did you all, like, give me the, the method, like, we said that Covington Highway was the south line, but, come on, Mayor Protem.
That's in the charter as well.
That Covington Highway is the south border of the, of the line for the CID?
Right, it almost has to be, because you have the East Metro CID that leads up to the other one, you cannot overlap CID's.
You, correct, you cannot, which is why I'm asking you about where the lines, you, you said "we," and that's why I asked you who was "we," so I can, so I can ask, okay, Tara, when you, when you all were sitting down with the lines, you know, tell me the benefit of the lines being here, the lines being there, I'm trying to ask the authors of the suggestion questions and context about the suggestion. How, how is that unreasonable? That's what a work session's for, so I'm asking you, you, you gave me three different pictures, north, east, and west.
Can you back it up a little bit? Okay, stop right there. Look at the lines. They're taking all the commercial property, uh, industrial property, sorry.
Yeah, Murray.
Uh, please, you cannot do this, ma'am, you're gonna be asked to leave. Okay, back up one more. Okay? You see how it circles all of the industrial property?
Well, thi- this outlines all the industrial property in the La Tonia Industrial Boulevard.
Yes, ma'am.
And nothing else?
Well, you're gonna see some that are called in the middle of it, maybe light industrial, but this is, uh, a light industrial, heavy industrial, I'm not sure what that little, uh, yellowish looking part is, but it's very small.
Okay, and then you said the industrial council proposed these lines to you, is that, that what I heard you say earlier?
They are in concert with it, yes.
Okay, and how many of the businesses represented on the council are represented in the lines here?
I'm sorry, how many what?
How many businesses that are with, that are on this Stonecrest Industrial Council, which, by the way, public, is not a Stone, City of Stonecrest organization? Um, but the Stonecrest Industrial Council, how many of the business owners are represented on the council that are represented within these lines?
But I can't answer for you. Another question.
Okay, who can we ask that question to?
I can get someone in here to make a presentation if you want it.
No, I, I don't think a presentation is there.
I can answer all your questions.
Yeah, I mean, if, if those are the authors of the line, then I guess that is the right people to ask, but I'm just, I'd like to know, of the people who suggested the lines, how many of them represent the businesses within the lines?
I cannot answer that question for you. I mean, how many times you ask it?
Okay, I'd like to get that answer. Uh, and then, if, can you go to the, I don't know which order, so go to the next one, Alicia, let me see if I can see the, yeah, that's good, okay. So like you said, the, I think the law and the charter is in unison that says that you cannot create a CID within a CID, right? Um, so the lines here represent just the businesses, for the most part, in the La Tonia Industrial Park, um, that are not a part of any other CID?
You cannot duplicate, because they're taxed, you cannot double tax.
Right, so that.
They're not a part of another CID, cannot be.
So that, that means that they have to choose a CID, right? But that doesn't mean that these lines are not encompassing an existing CID, the boundaries?
Right.
Right, so, so these lines do encompass another CID's boundaries, it's just that the businesses would have to choose which CID to pay it to.
No, 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 that is not true, no. So, uh, the businesses that are there now do not belong to a CID.
None of the businesses.
None of the businesses there, none of them, none of them, none of them.
That you've outlined.
Zero.
Belong to any other CID?
Zero.
Okay, and, but, and also, n- none of this map that's outlined is within another CID already?
None of it.
Okay, so this, this industrial park area is not in the East Metro CID at all?
I've answered that, how many ways do I have to answer it?
Okay, I mean, I just want to ask it more than one way, so I can get the same answer. Okay, I would like to, I would like to know the businesses that are within this boundary that are also represented on the business, on the Stonecrest Industrial Council.
Then information is available, but I do not have it.
Yeah, I got it, I, I, I want it, I'm not asking you for it, I'm saying I'd like to have it, however you can get it to us, I'd like to have it.
Is it?
That's all for me, I'm.
Anyone else? Any questions about the proposed map for the Stonecrest CID?
Mayor Protem?
Councilman Fai.
Um, Councilman Graves, you know this area well, could you tell me about some of the benefits of doing this map and some of the vitalizations that might happen for this area?
The map that Mayor Protem proposed, um, we did talk about it. Um, we had several meetings talking about, um, bringing the CID or starting to see it reinventing or bringing the CID back.
My, so we can get it on record.
Um, but I think Mayor Protem would be better at answering that question, only because he met with the organization.
All right, what is your question again, Sam?
Uh, so can you tell me a little bit about the, because I, I have to admit, I'm not very, I'm not very familiar with that area. Can you tell me about some of the benefits of the map, you know, kind of what would be done, what would be done? Because this is, uh, it's effectively an opt-in tax, so what, what are some of the benefits that would be from turning this area into a CID?
Um, you have in your package a list of benefits of, uh, CID's, and this area brings you all of those.
Y- yes, so like, in that, so I understand like investment into like the.
You have that handy, uh, so you can get that question answered.
Okay, hear that?
On the purpose, the purpose of a community improvement district shall be the provision of any one or more of the following governmental services and facilities. It talks about street road construction maintenance, including curbs, sidewalks, street lights, and devices to control the flow of traffic on streets and roads, parks, recreational areas and facilities, uh, stormwater and sewage collection and disposal systems, uh, development, storage, uh, treatment, purification, and distribution of, uh, water, public transportation, terminal and dock facilities and parking facilities, search other facilities, I mean, search other services and facilities that may be provided by general law. Now, um, these operations tax themselves, and most of the development that takes place there are funded by the CID's. It is a tremendous engine for economic development and for public safety, a lot of them provide, uh, augmentation of public safety. So, uh, that, if, if, if you look around, not just, uh, the Cap County of Metro Atlanta, uh, you'll find that, uh, there's an East Metro CID, there's a Metro South CID, there's a Tucker Summit CID, there's a Champlain Doraville CID, there's an Assembly CID, uh, there's a Tucker Northlake CID, a Perimeter CID, Gateway Eight-five CID, what was that? Okay, uh, then I'll let him, uh, tell me that. Councilman Fai?
Uh, I was gonna let you continue, you.
Okay, so you like what I, all right, let me finish what I'm saying.
Well, well, um, Mayor Protem asking specifically about, you know, the area itself, so like, because I wanted to know, like, you know, is there a ton of, like, you know, crime that's happening in the area, or there are things that have to be fixed in the area that, you know, kind of the city might not be able to handle on our own? Is, what's, what are some of the, um, you know, it might be that the industrial council wants to kind of, kind of rebuild the area, so they're suggesting that, they're saying, suggesting this? Or what are, what are some of the tangibles of like this specific map? Why do we choose this map? What are some of the things that we specifically need, want to see done for that CID?
Yeah, I just attended the, um, Tucker, uh, Summit CID, and one thing they talked about was crime in the area, particularly automobile break-ins, that's something they want to deal with themselves. They talked about, um, what's going on in, um.
Those thirty-eight break-ins that happened in Tucker.
What's going on in Ukraine, and, and really, they, they even brought up Ukraine. Uh, they're saying that Ukraine is developing, uh, or has a need for drones, uh, to deliver missiles, and they are trying to get a contract in Tucker to help build them. And, and this is a type of economic development that they're trying to bring to the area. And, uh, road improvement, not just for trucks, so if you can improve a road for a truck, it would benefit everybody. But, uh, these are the things that they do, and, uh, you, you have those issues in the industrial area now. And a CID would only improve it.
Uh, wait, 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 well, hold on.
Man, good night.
Um, I withdraw, thank, uh, thank you, Mayor Protem. And if, at, at, wait, actually, one more thing, so do we have to, and this is legal, you can hop into this, do we have to re-establish the CID committee prior to setting up the map? Or is it, okay, um, is it, do we have to set up the CID committee before we get the map? Or do we have to do the map?
Well, thank you, Mayor Cobble. Uh, now, are you asking me a question, sir?
No, we have to.
I, I'm asking both, both. Both, both you and, um, and legal.
No, we do not.
Yes, sir.
All right, now, that was a matter of, uh, one of the items on here, that it was suggested that you establish that, but we've already done that, and you already have something similar with the, um, Industrial Council, uh, to answer a lot of the questions that needed to be answered and to survey the residents, all the business owners in the area about their interest in participating and willingness to be taxed. That was what the committee would be, uh, tasked to do. But since we have someone in place to already do that, and we've already gotten public engagement when we had the, uh, CID committee together, so no, I don't think there'd be a need for another one.
Has, has CID committee kind of, well, when were, when were those kind of, um, do we have many members of, of the CID committee who are on council day?
Uh, Councilwoman, uh, Graves and, I understand, you have a server on it, or the, Washington served on it?
Of course. Uh, I will.
We keep talking about the map, it was just a suggestion that Mayor Protem brought, of course, it's discussion, but we can come back and talk about it if it's not.
Your mic, your, your mic again, I'm, I'm sorry.
We can always go back and adjust it, it's just a suggestion.
No, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm asking for my education, just so I can be aware. But, um, I'd, I'd love to have a conversation afterwards, just to kind of get educated on history. But that, that kind of withdraws, thank you all.
Thank you, any other questions or comments?
Yes, sir, Mayor Protem. Uh, could you put the map back up, Ms., uh, Attorney Thompson, Andrew somebody? Okay, so the map that's there, uh, Mayor Protem, you said the boundary is Covington Highway?
Yes.
But everything that's in what is already known as the Stonecrest Industrial Council, that footprint is there as well?
Mostly, yes.
And you say that no one in the Stonecrest La Tonia, uh-uh, the Stonecrest Industrial Council, none of that footprint or business owners are part of any other CID? But the committee is made up of, outside of Washington and Graves and yourself, who else is on the committee that suggested?
There, there is no committee.
I thought you said, I wrote down a CID committee.
You said, uh, the question was, who was "we" when we were talking about developing the map? And I just said I had discussions with those two council members, because this area is mostly in that district.
Okay, so nobody from the.
You had a CID committee that existed, uh, at least two years ago.
Is that where Mr. McBride is, no?
No, that's a different situation.
All right. Who, who was in that committee then, do you know?
Pulled the list, Councilwoman Washington was on that committee, I thought Graves, but she said, "No, she wasn't," it must have been.
That committee, Councilwoman Washington wasn't, and at the time, it was Councilman.
Councilman Rob Turner, okay.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I, I guess for me, I'm just trying to clear up the misconception that I had, because in the little conversation that I've heard, I assumed that the East Metro had something to do with the Industrial Council, the Stonecrest Industrial Council.
No, ma'am, absolutely nothing. Uh, they've had discussions, and, uh, the map does not go north of Covington Highway. And, uh, I don't mean to involve the public, but the young lady that had issues, she lives south of Covington Highway, nowhere near this proposed map.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll stop for now, thank you.
Okay, uh, make the mistake about it, you know, this, um, CID, uh, is a positive thing, and it has the ability to go forward with, without our input. Uh, we have an opportunity to put two members on the board for the CID, which would give us some say-so as to what takes place, and I think it's a great thing for economic development and, uh, public safety and other matters related to the growth of any city. So, um, charter provides for. So, um, charter provides for it. I'm pushing to get it on the agenda for whatever approval we need to give to make it happen. Now...
Mayor Protem, I'm sorry, I got one more question while it's, while it's right here. And this may be way too in advance. But the businesses, uh-uh, the members of the CID either live in Stonecrest or have a business in Stonecrest? Help me with that piece. And that, that's just for education.
Okay.
Not just for this one.
Uh, the reason this map is so important is that at some point, someone's gotta take a request to the Tax Commissioner of the Cab County. Say to the Tax Commissioner, these people are willing to submit to being taxed to support this organization. And the Tax Commissioner will say, well, what people? Then you have to identify by parcel number or address, or whatever means, which people. And those individuals who own those businesses are the ones that will say, I agree, do not agree, or whatever, to be in tax, to be a part of this CID. And that will be shown by the parcels on the map that is submitted. And those, those are the ones who will be, uh, the voting members and the ones with the biggest properties, I think, might get an extra vote or whatever. And the city gets two votes out of a seven-person board, I believe it is. And the city would control two votes.
So, again, my question was either a business owner...
Yes.
Or a resident?
No residence.
Just a business owner?
This does not apply to residential property at all.
Okay, a business owner in that footprint. Okay, thank you.
Yes. And I think there are a couple of little properties that might not qualify because of some tax exempt status they might temporarily have or whatever. So that is a, uh, something that has to be weeded out by the Tax Commissioner. But, uh, this map is critical for the next step. And that's why we only brought one. I, I brought the whole thing. But out of that, it was this one step that we wanted to deal with tonight. And that is the map, the map, the map, the map. Get the map moving, because in order to get this done, we gotta take a first step. And my understanding is that this was your next best step, was to get the map done. And, uh, we're proposing one, and we'll see if it needs to be changed and what changes need to take place. Now, we can assist by helping to make copies of the maps and looking at them closer ourselves. And, uh, other than that, uh, the process goes forward according to charter. Mayor Cobble.
Uh, two hopefully very quick things. Um, you mentioned more than one time that the CID, um, can be, um, implemented without the city. But in your presentation, that's in the slide deck, not the one that Alicia was walking through, uh, it, it mentioned, so I guess I want to understand the difference between what you said and what's in here. Uh, it says that a resolution consenting to the creation of the CID must be adopted by all governing authorities where the CID is located. So is there a different method that you're referring to when you say that it can be formed without the city?
Um, let me just say that, um, we did sign a letter of consent for the East Metro CID. Uh, so we could participate in that. Uh, can it be done without our consent? That would be difficult. I spoke, uh, maybe a little too hasty on that. They can be done without a city being in place. Give you an example, the, um, Tucker, uh, CID, that was formed before they became a city. Uh, the Dunwoody CID was formed long before they became a city. So they, uh, but they had to get consent of the county, I do believe, uh, in order to make that happen. So can they just go from here without our involvement? Uh, probably not. But since we, since it's in our charter, it's gonna be hard for us to say, oh, it's there, but, you know, okay, let's change the charter and take it out, uh, which makes no sense, since it is a benefit to the city. As I mean, it's like cutting off one of your legs because you don't like your shoes.
Not necessarily.
Anyway.
Uh, yeah.
Make a few analogies.
Yeah. I totally understand that the charter gives the city, um, the authority to activate a CID, but it's certainly by resolution, is incumbent upon those elected officials at that moment when they deem the, um, CID activation appropriate. So I understand. I just wanted to make sure that there was some clarity there. Um, so I think you clarified that, that it will take a resolution of the City Council in order to activate this, which is also in your presentation. Um, I, what, you are saying correctly that the map is, is important, and it, it absolutely 100% is. We may have different reasonings for why that map is important, but nonetheless, the map is important. Why I asked about, um, the members of the Stonecrest Industrial Council and how many of them are represented within those lines, is equally as important, at least to me, to understand who the majority of the ownership is in this outlined area. Uh, that's critical, uh, to me. Understanding the benefit of a CID, I don't think is a question of any member of council. I think we understand the benefit of a CID. Uh, back to Councilman Fife's more detailed question, what was, what is the benefit to the specific area outlined in this proposed map? I'm just taking that a step further to say, who is the majority in this? In, in your presentation, with written consent to create the CID by the majority of the ownership of real property within the district, subject to these taxes, and the owner, the owners of the real property within a district which constitutes 75% of the value. So 75% of the value of the area outlined in your map represents the Stonecrest Industrial Council, which is only represented by one specific that means something to that map.
By one specific what?
I paused on purpose.
I, 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 I missed the question in that.
Nope. No, you didn't. Mm-hmm.
I, I can't respond to something I don't understand, so...
Um, you don't really need to respond. You don't really need to respond. It's important to know who is in the Stonecrest Industrial Council that represents the businesses within these lines that you've proposed in this map. Because 75% of the value of those businesses in that property are under one umbrella, whom is represented by?
You can, uh, go to the parcel themselves, and they'll tell you who owns the property. And that's gonna be the owner, whether they're in the CID or not CID.
I understand.
You'll see who the property owners are.
Yes, and, and who those property owners are identified within the Stonecrest Industrial Council, who proposed this map to you. It'll fall in the land. So that's why I wanted the answer to that question. The question still remains, I'd like to know, who represent, who is represented, who makes up the Stonecrest Industrial Council whose represented businesses are within the lines that you proposed in this map?
I say the members, and the members of that, uh, group will elect really five members. And we will select two members to, uh, be on the Board of Directors for the CID. And those will be your representatives.
Well, and that's, that's also debatable, because, because Mayor Protem, the number is not debatable. No, you're absolutely right. The two members of the board appointed by the City Council, not debatable. The two members of the board elected by the vote of the electors, not, not debatable. Three members shall be elected by the vote of the equity electors, not debatable. What is debatable is who sets the table for those seven appointed members. We do, we do not have to run this through the Stonecrest Industrial Council. If we would like to have, if we would like to, uh, activate our CID, and we would like to present a map for that CID, we set the table for who the members of the CID Board is. We select who those, after they, of course, agree to be in the CID, we run who represents us.
And go to the last...
We do not have to go to the Stonecrest Industrial Council table to be a part of our own government. If we want a CID, we set the table and invite them to ours. What you're proposing here is that we join their table. What I'm saying to you is I'm flipping that back and say, first of all, tell me who's in this, who's in these boundaries and what businesses are represented. But most importantly, give me the table to set and let me invite them.
You're absolutely right, and it could take you about seven or eight years to get the number...
Well, it'll take me three votes.
That's in there as well. Uh, that's in there as well.
Let's do it.
No, no, in order to establish it. Because now you gotta go back, identify all of these businesses, contact all of them, and get them to tentatively agree to become a part of the CID, assign on and be taxed. And that's what takes time, a lot of time. And what I'm telling you is that a lot of that work has already been done.
Yeah.
And, and I realize who it was done by.
I understand that work has been done by a majority of the 75% of that ownership, who's represented by one...
And if you start over, it's gonna have to go probably the same way.
There may be some others who want to be in the CID, but they're not represented by that one.
I think it's open to anybody who wants to join the CID.
It's open to anybody who's in Stonecrest.
We can find out. That's why you have two members on there.
Anyway, just want the answer to the question, Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
Whenever you get it.
Any other questions on the map, or the CID?
Mayor Protem.
Councilman Fife.
Um, so when this comes back before council, will there be a presentation from some of the individuals, some of the business owners who are assenting to be, to be on this, um, CID and are in support of this map?
If that is your desire, we can make that happen.
Uh, I would, I would like to hear, you know, some of the business owners, reasons why they would like to see this, some of the ideas that they have and for making this area better, and some of the things that they really want to do. I'm open to it. I just want to see that they have a really detailed plan, what they want to do, and that it's, that is certainly beneficial to the city. In addition, this might be, this is kind of a, Terry is not educated question. Um, what, would that, would the establishment of a CID kind of preclude the city from being able to collect the millage, um, that is, or from those, from those businesses? Out of respect to Mayor Protem, Mayor Protem.
I don't know.
Understood.
Councilman Fife, uh, that has absolutely no impact on that whatsoever. This is a tax above and beyond what is already in place. So it has no impact on any taxes that that business might already be...
Oh, so it's like a big HOA?
I'm sorry?
It's like a big HOA.
Kinda, if you want to use that analogy. But, uh, they agree to take on a second tax.
I'm sorry, this is, this is really interesting. It's just education. But thank y'all, thank y'all so much for being, for, for patience.
And, and it, it needs to be understood, because a lot of us didn't understand it, that we went through this about six times. You know, and, uh, that is a big part about CID's. They agree to tax themselves to run their operation. In addition to that, they qualify for grants and other fundraisers that they can do to support the area. Sometimes some rather hefty, uh, federal, uh, grants to improve an area. And as they improve the industrial area, they are improving the city. Uh, but without that, and so many of these projects are shovel-ready projects, and you don't have people in place to administer it, they go someplace else. So this puts us in a good position to receive, uh, a lot of benefits from other areas in terms of, uh, economic development.
Understood.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Mayor Protem.
Other questions and concerns before we close this out? And Madam City Manager, I'm gonna find out from you which department we could go to to get a map if we wanted to, uh, see the parcels involved in this particular suggested area. And we can share it with council.
Yes, sir, Mayor Protem, I'll work with, uh, Attorney Thompson if she has a copy of the map. Whomever has a copy of what you presented, I can, um, work with our staff to get that for you, to identify the parcels, identify the owners of the parcels. Okay?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Great. And, you know, don't forget your mic, ma'am. We'd like to hear you.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, ma'am.
I was just asking City Manager in doing whatever she's gonna do with the map, if maybe you could send it out to council? Because I want to blow it up and look at those lines and things.
Okay, and I, I do apologize. I just got that map today, so I will, uh, share it with you, uh, from what I do have. Okay?
And Mayor Protem, where do we get the list of those who are members of the Stonecrest Industrial Council?
I can, uh, request that before the week is out. And, uh, get it to, when you say we, who, who wants it? Does you, uh...
Well, information is good for everybody. And so while the City Manager is sending out the map and the owners of the parcels, I guess you could send it to her, and she can put it all in one email?
All right, I'll make that request.
Or staff, whoever you decide to send the email out, but just put it all in one email.
I'll make that request.
Thank you.
Okay, and it should be public information anyway. Okay, anything else? I did make note on my, uh, sheet, uh, Madam, uh, Mayor, URA Chair, that we are way behind on getting a URA meeting, but that's another sideline item.
Yeah, I actually have one in the hopper. I need to send the dates to you all, um, because we have real estate matter to decide on.
Counsel, any, uh, need for executive session?
Yes.
Councilman Fife.
Um, Mayor Protem, I move to go into executive session to discuss lit, uh, litigation, real estate, personnel, cybersecurity.
Is that a second?
Second.
I probably moved a second to go into, uh, executive session to discuss personnel, litigation, real estate, and cybersecurity. You ready for the question? All of those in favor, the motion was significant, by saying aye. Oppose, it's aye, so it's District One.
Aye.
District Two?
Aye.
District Three?
Aye.
District Four, aye. District Five, motion carries five to zero. We are temporarily adjourned to executive session. District Four, aye. District Five, motion carries five to zero. We are temporarily adjourned to executive session. District Four, aye. District Five, motion carries five to zero. We are temporarily adjourned to executive session.
Come out of executive session and return to our regular scheduled meeting.
So moved.
Second.
The following is second to come out of executive session and return to our regular scheduled meeting. Are you ready for the question? All of those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Oppose this, they say sooner or later, district one.
Aye.
District two.
Aye.
Three.
Aye.
District four is aye, district five.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. We are now back to our regular scheduled meeting. Counsel at this time want entertain the motion to adopt the minutes from executive session.
So moved.
Second.
The following is second to adopt the minutes from executive session. Are you ready for the question? All of those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Oppose this, they say sooner or later, district one.
Aye.
District two.
Aye.
Three.
Aye.
District four is aye, district five.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. The minutes from executive session are now adopted. Counsel, any urgent announcements? Don't forget to vote tomorrow for public service commissioner.